Okay, we have, uh, Giselle will, she's on the bus, so she doesn't normally come till late. Amy Bobb, we haven't seen her. Yeah, because, uh, so we do have, uh...
We want to call it a total.
Well, we can, yeah.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're, uh, I think, we have a couple who are not here, but they, they are running routes or they're, uh, working part-time. So, um, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and let Mona give the presentation. Does, does anybody need a handout? We, we have enough handouts for everybody. Okay, well then we'll, I'll turn it over to Mona, she'll give us the, the, um, recommendations or from our consultant, and we'll go with it from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Butch. And Lynn Fontaine apologizes he couldn't come. He had a conflict when we decided to have this. He's got a school board meeting in another parish. But he did come and give this, and many of you were there when he presented this packet to the board insurance committee, so the information is much the same. Um, I want to start, though, by sha- sharing with you the proposed budget for the group insurance fund. That's this one pager here. And want to call to your attention that we have, um, included a recommendation for a 3% premium increase. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, 'cause there, um, Lynn did put some charts in the packet to show what that would look like. And also, um, call your attention to, uh, the fact that we have decreased the amount of the OPEB transfer money, just to call that to your attention, because many of you feel strongly about those funds. In the packet itself, I would, I'm not going to belabor every little thing, because I'm sure you've looked at it before, and like I said, he went over it, and for most of you. But I do want to look at page one, call your attention to that page where he did, Lynn prepared a budget analysis for us. And so you see, he has, um, put the net paid claims for 2016, on which he based, um, his baseline budget. He trended 6% prem- uh, claims increase. That's, um, rather conservative, but our plan has been doing really well. He added in what we pay Humana for the retirees who take advantage of that policy. He projected the Affordable Care Act cost this year. It's gone down considerably, 'cause we've already paid in past years the big fees, and now they're just a little assessment that we pay. He estimated the re- uh, prescription drug rebate savings. That's the amount that we get back for the medication, so that's actually, um, a minus in that co- that should have parentheses around it, I think, because we back that out. Our projected fixed costs, that's what we pay for Blue Cross Blue Shield, our reinsurance, and all the, our costs to run the plan. And then he added in projected plan ca- he added it all up for a total of $48,845,689. And then our projected front funding is slightly less than that. So that's why he was recommending a premium increase. He actually started out offering a 5% to 7%. Carol, you have a question?
Yes.
That's under administrative costs. Yes, ma'am. Fixed, fixed cost. Yes, ma'am. That's the fixed cost. Yes, ma'am. So, he started out offering a 5% to 7% premium increase. You'll see, I'm going to call your attention to another page further in the handout, where we asked him to come back with some plan adjustments to lower that premium increase as much as we could. So, look at page seven. And so when I built this budget with Heidi, our accountant, we did take into account all of the recommended changes, except eliminating Walgreens and Rite Aid, because I felt that, um, you all weren't too happy about that, and the savings aren't enormous, so we felt like we could take that off the table. And have less disruption to our members. But the other changes I did, um, put in there, so that we are saving a little over a million dollars, and we have gone down to a 3% premium increase. The charts on the last three pages show you for each plan what that increase looks like. So for the basic PPO, which most people are on, you're looking at, for an individual, an increase of $4. For a family, 18. So you could see, go down the, um, employee slash retiree share, and the share difference to see what that estimated increase is. For each of the three plans, the basic, enhanced, and high deductible. So I believe tomorrow night, the board is convening to talk about the budget, and this will be presented to them tomorrow night. So you're certainly welcome to come back if you want to participate in that discussion. Or if you have anything you want to share, Butch, if y'all want to make some formal recommendations, um, that I can write up in minutes, I'll be, I'll be glad to do that for you.
Well, I sent everybody the, the connection to a link to its own tree, so time, uh, to look at it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I did send you the link to the, the proposals and whatnot, uh, so that you had time to study that. And so, um, it, it looks pretty much straightforward. We've, uh, we haven't had an increase in two years. So, pretty much, um, as far as I'm concerned, it, it's expected. I mean, that, that's just how it is. Costs have gone up. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay, hang on.
If you send it to me and I have time.
Mona, can you tell me, what year did the board decide to pay employee, insurance employee salary from the insurance fund account?
Well, I'm sorry, what was your que- why they do it?
No, what year did they pass that? I don't, and I've been on the...
It was before I came here. I...
Oh, no, uh-uh.
Oh, yeah.
When I first started, your salary was the only salary that came out of insurance, out of our funds. Other employees did not come out of this fund. The board paid for it. So I just want to know when they made that change.
No, there were two other employees in the department when I came in. They were both paid out of that fund. I mean, I've, as long as I've been preparing the budget, that's been in there.
So Carol, we, we can ra- we'll research that.
Because I'm looking at the... I'm looking at how much we're spending. So I'm going, we're paying Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're paying two consultants, we have a whole staff in there. When you put all that money together, that's a lot of money. Then you're taking out for Gatsby. It's all coming out of here. That's what I'm looking at.
So on the back of your budget, it shows you the salaries. You saw that? Okay, good.
Mona, did it have anything to do with us being self-insured?
No, no, you, you haven't always been self-insured, but yes. It's, I'm fairly certain that's when it came into, into being.
Because otherwise, if you wouldn't be, we would not be self-insured. We would be paying Blue Cross more to do our work?
I'm just asking. Oh, yes.
And I want to say with Sarah Upton, who was here at the last meeting, and she stated, and I, I hope I have the right parish, Calcasieu pays no insurance department salaries. You stated that in the business world, that's how it's done. I want to know in the school board world, how many parishes in Louisiana pay the staff funding from the insurance funds?
So Carol, we'll research that. I'm not sure we'll have that answered tomorrow night, but we'll research that.
Okay. A couple of questions on the budget, not on Lynn's presentation. Um, we're increasing premiums, $2 million something, if my math, my terrible math is correct. But our interest income is only supposed to go up $3,000?
I think we just budget pretty conservatively on that. And that's what our, our accountant recommended.
So you're going to increase from $48 million to, to $50 million? Forty-eight, six, to 50, but your interest is only going to increase 3,000?
We can look at it again, if you want us to, Nancy.
And the other thing, that the general fund, the contribution to the general fund, is increasing from 109 to 120.
Where are you looking?
I'm on...
Oh, refunds to general fund. That's what hap- when, what we do is, when somebody goes on Medicare, sometime they've paid their premium ahead of time, and we have to refund them the money if their premium went down.
Gotcha.
That's what that is. And other refunds, that we have to pay people if they have overpaid.
Why is the administrative cost decreasing by 10,000? From 332, 421 to 322, 439?
I guess, 'cause we didn't spend all that this year, so we don't need to budget that high. I'm looking at the administrative costs. Um, I can't tell right off.
So if I'm reading this correctly, we're going to increase premiums about 2.6 million, and our fund balance is going to go from 6.7 to 9?
That's what we're predicting. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mona? Mona?
Anthony.
Hi. Obviously, I'm not a retiree, but could you explain the logic in the reduction to the OPEB, the, in the proposed budget?
Do you want to?
Yeah, I'd like to take that. So there was, um, there has been discussion among this group in particular about the OPEB contribution. Matt Dugah is on this committee. You know, he speaks to the responsibility of the board to continue to fund the OPEC, OPEB obligation. Now, when you drill down to it, there are only two districts in the state of Louisiana that are putting money into OPEB. And there is the responsibility to fo- have it fully funded, but to fully fund it is about $12 million. Right now, in this period of time we're in, it's almost unrealistic to assume that we would be continuing to fund the OPEB contribution as high as we have been. So I made the decision to lower the, um, the portion from the health insurance plan to $125,000. The general fund would likewise contribute $125,000. So it's not a lot of money, but it's a quarter of a million dollars that we will continue to, to provide. We should be able to argue that we are still funding OPEB, and that we are still committed to having it fully funded. But the reality is, like the board asked me just a week ago, to try to find $7.5 million worth of cuts. The insurance plan needs to save every dollar that it can in the process. So i- is that strong logic? I think it's, given the circumstances, we're doing what we can, trying to be responsive to the membership. I don't know. Matt would need to answer that. Anthony?
Um, what's the third party? What it's in, I can't tell you. Matt could probably explain that to you. It's probably in bonds and money market accounts. But Matt can give you a better answer. So with that being said, and I understand that, you know, we're one of the few parishes that's funding this, this, uh, this trust that we have, which is a really good thing. With everything you've just said, is there any timeline or plan as far as, when do we expect to have it fully funded in the future? Is there like a roadmap?
Okay, so no, there, there is no decided upon roadmap. There are some, certainly some opportunities. If the economy bounces back, and we hope that it does, we hope that we're not continually being pressed with charter schools coming into Lafayette Parish. We hope that this fund will continue to support, maybe one day, increasing the OPEB contribution. I mean, that's what, we're in a situation now where I think it's unrealistic to assume that we, we're, we're barreling ahead, full steam ahead, to fund this obligation. And it is an obligation, but, you know, as, as Mr. Lemoine correctly said, we're one of only three districts that are doing that. The question I would ask is, what would happen if something happened to health care in the entire state of Louisiana, and no districts could provide for health insurance for retirees? Then Lafayette Parish would at least have some money in the OPEB account. So we have to be realistic about this.
Right, and I think that's part of the argument, that it's never a good time. So if we're going to reduce it, then we may as well stay at the current level, because even though it may seem like it's unrealistic, I mean, it's never a good time.
I disagree. I mean, I, I know the general fund kicked in half a million dollars, the insurance plan kicked in $400,000. This is not, in my opinion, the time to contribute $900,000 to this trust fund. I don't think of this as, there's no better time to contribute $900,000. This board's going to be making decisions tomorrow night about teaching positions, about administrative positions, about, uh, changing all sorts of staffing ratios. This board is interested in whether or not we can downsize internally, within our own budget, to free up some money that would then be dedicated for some degree of facility improvements. We went, we've gone to the voters repeatedly, and we have not had a favorable vote on facilities. Board members have heard, and I think maybe you likewise have expressed the, the idea that maybe we need to downsize. Maybe we need to find the money to deal with facilities, looking within, instead of looking outside for additional funding.
And I was only referring to the 400, not the extra five.
And then we don't have any either, because then our costs, our premium cost is going to go up. And then while you gave me the mic, let me just, my last que- yeah, my last question. I heard Lynn twice in March tell us in this room that, you know, we were doing well, using generic drugs, we were doing okay, we should have probably a surplus. That was something positive. I brought that back to retirees, I stood before them, and I always, when I stand before them, I said, "Okay, y'all, you know you're going to have an increase in premium at some point in time." I always tell them that. Be prepared for that. Did we have anything catastrophic happen between March to May? Because if we did, I need you to tell me that. I could stand before the retirees and say, "Okay, guys, it was just time for an increase in our premiums." They can accept that. But did we have something drastically happen between when Lynn spoke to me, I heard him twice, until tonight, that we're raising premiums other than it's time to raise it? Because I need that answer before I see these retirees again.
I would say the big sticker shock is the specialty medications. Those are going up, I mean, these are very expensive drugs, tens of thousands of dollars a month for two doses. I mean, the stuff like what's used to cure Hep C and those kinds of things. And we're getting more and more utilizers of those drugs. It's a tiny group of people, like maybe 17 or 18, but they're costing us millions, and we really have to get a, get ahead of that. Um, it's just the time, sign of the times we're living in, that we can extend people's lives and cure things today we couldn't cure, even two years ago.
And Mona, all along Lynn had been preparing us for the industry standard of about a 7% rate increase annually. So he, he, doing well means that you can deal with the 7% rate increase annually. We were able to be a little bit more effective in the health insurance plan that we have, so able to bring it down to 3%. But that's well under the industry standard for a rate increase.
Yeah. Double digits is the standard. So we are doing, we're ju- we're performing well for our group.
Mona, the, um, first, thank you for leaving Rite Aid and Walgreens in, because that, having a sole supplier can end up being a problem, even though you don't anticipate it. One suggestion, one of the problems we seem to have every time I come to these meetings, is that we don't have a record. Everybody has a different memory of when premiums were raised, how much they were raised, when the maximum out of pocket was raised, how much it was raised. Is this, is there any way, because this is, your budget's a real good place to start. If, if you could start where you have your note that says it includes the premium increase, but it also includes, um, an increase in maximum out of pocket, it includes an increase in generic increase. If you could do this and do it continuously, so that there would be a record, because we try and remember what we did in 2015, and what the maximum out of pocket was then, and nobody has a side-by-side annual comparison, which would really, I would think, be helpful with the changes in the con... And my last question is, the reserve, the insurance reserve fund that is separate than the $65 million reserve fund, is not reflected in this budget, it's in another place in the budget. Is that correct?
Oh, that's a Billy question. I, I don't know.
I'll find, thank you very much.
Okay.
Ms. Mona, I'm...
I'll find out, though, and I'll let you, you all know. I'm sorry, Phillip?
I'm sorry. Uh, am I correct in saying that, uh, y'all wanted to put Walgreens and Rite Aid back into the pharmacy network and not exclude them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, I'd like for us to actually reconsider that, because there's some misinformation here. We are not talking about a sole provider for pharmacy. We are talking about you may use any pharmacy you so desire, but Walgreens and Rite Aid would be excluded from the network. That is an exclusion of two pharmacies, not saying you must use a single pharmacy. I would rather see us do a reward for good shopping behavior, instead of penalizing people that have to use prescription drugs. I would like to see us on the point where we increase the maximum out of pocket from 600 to 1,000. I'd like that to change from 600 to 800. Let's cut that in half. Let's don't penalize those people, and instead, put the Walgreens and Rite Aid exclusion back in.
Whatever your wishes.
Can you explain to me what it means if you exclude Walgreens and Rite Aid? I've never understood what, what that means. I mean, I understand you could go to any other pharmacy, but why does it... Is that what it is? That it's...
It's that they, they cost us more. They're, we're paying more for drugs there than we are at the other places, at those two chains.
Now, okay. So, so it's just saying you would prefer people to use, I still don't quite understand why $100,000?
If we excluded them...
Yeah.
Then your card wouldn't work there. You'd have to pay out of pocket.
Oh, I got you now.
Like, turn them off.
That's the biggie.
Yes.
Have they worked with them to see, because I mean, that's the one I use. I've used Walgreens for 15 years, and, uh, I asked them about it, and, I mean, they almost went in a panic, because they didn't realize. Uh, have somebody talked to them to see if they, if prices can be looked at? Because I'm sure, because he said the other night that it was a national thing, you know, it was not local. But, but has anybody spoken to, because I don't think certainly the Walgreens are aware of that here.
No, you're right. Those, those are negotiated on a national level, and I'm sure they renegotiate those routinely. But I'll certainly ask if, you know, if they can't do that.
When you look at it in that perspective, and that you have, uh... When you look at it in that perspective, and that you are eliminating almost the whole state of Louisiana at Walgreens, because that's what's going to end up, uh, happening in a lot of respect, I think you'll have a different attitude from them, you know, honestly.
Yeah.
We've got a little debate going on here.
The reason, I, I, just from personal experience, some of the smaller pharmacies, um, yes, you can go to them, they can't always get the drug you need from their wholesaler. Um, so what, when I said you're going to a sole source supplier, I met one of the big guys. You're going to, you're eliminating the competition from, um, that the, CVS has. The competition from Walgreens and Rite Aid can kind of keep CVS honest, and if drugs are not available at CVS, you can go to Rite Aid or Walgreens, and vice versa. Taking that option away may not cause a problem for everyone, it may cause significant problems for some people, depending on the medications they're taking.
Okay, any other comments?
So what we've heard is that it's a very few people costing us a lot of money. So if the plan is to save, was I incorrect? Was I incorrect? Yeah, okay. Um, so if it's a few people costing us a lot of money, so they have to do a little bit more shopping to find their prescription drugs, but if meat is on sale somewhere, we tend to go. Right? Drugs are a little bit different. Drugs are a little bit different. They're going to have to do some upfront homework, but if we can save more people on the plan money, I say we go with majority saves the money. And those who have to do their homework to get their savings for their particular drugs will have to do the homework. Once a pharmacy knows that you're using it, and you're on a schedule with them, you can usually get it. Or like my father, he does his by mail order. It took him a little bit. We had to do a little drive, we had to go to Crowley. Once we got, did that, now everything is sent to his home, and the savings is dramatic.
Is there a way, perhaps, for those who can't find the drug, uh, and we could, maybe, you know how we do exceptions in, in some situations with specialty drugs? Is there a way, perhaps, maybe they can get that exception, and we can, we can pay like we normally would, whereas, and bring everybody else back to the other pharmacists? Now, I, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, uh, I, I just had a, a prescription redone, okay? It's an old-line drug, and I took it to several places, and there's several different costs. Um, the, the pharmacy in Scott, Cashway, basically, the, my, my portion of it for a 90-day script was $20. Walmart does it for 10. Now, if it's $2 or $3, I'd have paid it. No big deal. And then from what I'm understanding, the Walmart part of it, they don't even go through the insurance. It's such an old-line drug that, uh, as I understood it, that's what I was told by the, um, the associate. So, that's something else, that, you know, we talk about shopping? It's very possible. Another thing, and I, I said this before also, uh, my wife had gone in for, uh, R3 arthritis or whatever, and, uh, the doctor prescribed the drug. 30 days, $2,000. So the pharmacist called, now this was Cashway. Pharmacist called, said, "It's like that, you may want to think about this." So they called the doctor. They, the doctors don't know the cost of drugs, okay? What they get is from the, the drug salesman. And basically, it was two drugs, two separate drugs, they're both under script, but, uh, we wound up paying 10 bucks, okay? And what it was, was Advil and another inflammatory drug. That was it. But they combined it into one, and the cost is $2,000? I mean, you know, we said, "Oh, no, there's no way." And so we, we did the $10 thing, worked as well as having the script. That's just like the compounding we had talked about, uh, where people are just, you know, well, you need to com- you know, you don't need to compound some of this stuff. Now, some people, perhaps, yes. And those, I think we need some consideration. But for, probably for the most part, like in this particular situation, we were able to get by with 10 bucks versus 2,000 bucks. Now, you have to understand, the, the insurance would be paying a good portion of that. And so we, we're saving a lot of money, if we shop.
Lynn told us that. We're doing a good job with prescriptions. So I don't know why we beating that dead horse. Uh, and I think we're going to continue doing it, and I think everybody in here makes sure that their prescription cost is the least amount that's coming out of their pocket.
But that's the whole point. It's not because they're not going and shopping at Walmart, or CVS, or Meche's Pharmacy, whatever other pharmacy, to find the lower prices. The evidence that they are telling us is that Walgreens and Rite Aid are quite a bit higher than the other pharmacies. We can go around and around on this, but if I can save 4,400 of our members, several hundred dollars out of pocket in prescription drugs, at the expense of excluding Walgreens and Rite Aid, I would much rather save 4,400 members of our, uh, employees and retirees that out-of-pocket expense.
Insurance...
Okay, $10,000, excuse me. Uh, at this point in time, uh, I'm, we can sit here and we can debate all night. I'd like to make a motion that we accept all the changes up of them that are listed, with the exception that we lower the maximum out-of-pocket for drug expenses from 600 to 800, excuse me, lower the increase from 600 to 800, instead of 600 to 1,000.
lower the increase from 600 to 800, instead of 600 to 1,000, and that we do exclude Walgreens and Rite Aid.
Instead of 800, you want 600?
No, 800 instead of 1,000. It's listed as 600 to 1,000 increase, decrease that amount of the increase. Wow.
Mona?
The out-of-pocket prescription drugs.
Is there, Mona, wait, do you finish? Is there any way that you can determine what Burnell asked? Because it seems like we were with CVS, we got away from CVS, we went back to CVS, being told that, that we could stay with the pharmacies we were using, and it's been a year, and now we're back to, to CVS. And the issue with drugs is, is twofold. One is cost, and the other is access. And accessibility of some drugs has changed. It's, you're not able to get some of the drugs that we once could get, in the form of generics. As, I just, I use Scott as an example, there's one antibiotic I take, it's the only one I can take for a certain problem. They used to be able to get, they can't even get it anymore. And they are, he's a former student, he's done everything he can to get that drug, he can't. Rite Aid can get it. Now, perhaps we can use it on exemptions, but it's not a matter of not wanting to save money, we also have to make sure people can access the drugs that they need for their health.
Along that vein, is there any way, Mona, that we could extend, like, let the board vote on it, do the increase, but for the prescription part, give everybody three to four months to make that change over without it affecting, because I know that there's a period of.
It would be January 1.
Okay, so if the change is made now, in six months, you don't think you could find a local pharmacy that could get that? And there's no modern equivalent?
If we have six months, then perhaps in six months, at a national level, Walgreens and Rite Aid would be willing to lower their prices. That's part of my concern. We're jumping at this because.
Also, perhaps in six months, CVS could get your prescription if they had, if you had the notice, and if they had the notice.
If the manufacturer will, will provide it, or their wholesaler will provide it, is what I'm told.
And you know what happens when I go to CVS? They send me to Walgreens, because they don't have it. So then where will it go? They really do that. They say, "Go across the street."
You can ask the consultant to check with Walgreens for the national aspect of it, Mona, if you don't mind?
No, I can, I'll ask, certainly.
I'm going to call, Mona?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to second Philip's motion.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to do an adjustment for the, the $200 difference on the singles out-of-pocket. And we also have on the floor with the second, the, it's the same motion, basically, where we would take in and delete Walgreens and Rite Aid, and go with it from there. Okay, do you have any objections, do you have any comments?
He's getting his steps.
It's just, when he said that, it's for prescription drugs, it's not out-of-pocket for the medical.
Okay, but yeah, I'm sorry, prescription drugs, yes. Okay, so we have a, a second, and all in favor, say a, raise your hand, so that we'll know. Okay, nays, raise your hand, okay, if you're on, okay. It apparently, yeah, Pat, not, okay, so the motion passes, so we'll present that to the board and see what they're going to do with that. Yes, ma'am. Hang on. I'm not going to run, because I might fall.
It costs us money. Can that not preclude you from also talking to Lynn to see if Walgreens and Rite Aid will lower their prices?
We can do that, but just, so that you'll know, that's not an equal swap. So this could, this could turn into a 3.5% rate increase for the board and the employees. It's not an equal swap, which you guys voted on.
I am aware that it's not an exact equal swap, however, according to the numbers from Mr. LaFontaine had provided, we were currently budgeted to have a net gain in reserves of 1.08 million, and with the increases trying to get ahead of the curve, I'm well aware of that, we were looking at getting a net gain of 2.27 million. So if we are short 50 to 100,000 on that swap, I think we're still on the, ahead of the curve.
Without adding an additional amount?
Yeah, without having to increase the premiums an additional amount.
I don't know.
Does that mean the board will be presented with, with this proposal that you, that the consultant came up with, right? And also be presented with what has been recommended by the insurance committee?
I'll type the minutes up, and make sure the board members have them tomorrow, when they.
So they could still vote to, to go with the original recommendation?
They'll have that option.
Okay, I have another question. There's an increase in the vigil, in the individual medical out-of-pocket by $600, and it's for single people, not for families. We're coming down for families from 12,000 to 10,000, and I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem with the increase for the individuals, because when the board pays the insurance for the individual, they pay $502. And when they pay it for an employee with a family, they pay $817, which means a family gets $315 more than a single person paid on their insurance. So I would like for the single people not to have such a large increase in the out-of-pocket.
Okay, does everybody understand that part of it? Okay, Pat, you want to repeat that, she's.
Okay. When, when the board pays its share of the insurance, for a single person, they pay When they pay for an employee with two or more, the board pays $817. There's a difference of $315 that a single person doesn't get, that a married person with children gets. So I would like the out-of-pocket for the individual not to increase by $600.
Butch, I have a comment. But the whole premium for an individual is only $651, so the board is picking up far more of the percentage of that than the family premium, which is $1,425. There's really no relation between a maximum out-of-pocket and what the premium that you pay is, except, so the board is paying substantially more for an individual.
Point of information, effective January the 1st, 2016, we had reduced our out-of-pocket from 7,500 to 4,900, and evidently, we are trying to adjust, that we probably dropped it too low based upon the utility, and we need to bump it up a little bit. So if you look at the big picture, going back two years, we're actually still better than what we were two years ago.
On a non-health issue, how much does the board pay for life insurance? What percentage?
We buy $10,000 of life insurance for each person, I think it's $2.50 a month, something like that, per person.
So, on the, on the budget, where life insurance premiums are $1,044, and it's going down to $1,021?
That's just based on membership.
So it's, how, how much of that is paid by the employee, and how much is paid by the board?
The employee can buy up above 10,000, so that's an individual choice. So for the basic life insurance, though, the employee doesn't pay anything.
So how much does the board pay for the life insurance?
The budgeted here?
So the board's paying the, for 17, 18, the $1,021?
That's what we anticipate. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I think maybe the question is, that life insurance premium is listed at, premiums at 1.04 million, that includes employees' extra contributions towards that, they're paying an extra premium on that, the board does not pick up all of that.
Right, right.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Nancy.
Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
Since I was one of the vocal ones a couple of weeks ago about OPEC, I do want to thank staff for listening. It didn't go on deaf ears, and I do appreciate that. And also, there were concerns, some other concerns from the audience that, that have been addressed. I, I know not everybody is happy, but, you know, we do appreciate you listening and, and acting upon some of this, thank you.
Well, from, from the, you know, what's been happening nationwide, you know, there's some people that, we talk about insurance premiums increasing and whatnot, you know, 25%, 50%, 75%. I, I think we've done a very good job, you know, comparing us to a lot of the others, and understanding that for the last two years, we really haven't had any increases, okay? We've gone through some trials and tribulations, and, you know, I, I think the ones that have talked to me feel it's, you know, it's, it's okay, they knew it was coming, and some are going to be not so happy, and some are, you know, they're, they're content with what's going on because of what the situation is nationwide. So I think, I think we've done a good job as far as for keeping the cost down, and Mr. Lynn has done a great job as far as for getting us the, the better prices and, and things like that. In the last thing I'd like to bring up, I have a letter from Chatson Y., and it's asking that the employee insurance committee has been operating without one of the designate, designated retiree representatives for a couple of years. We have been seeking a volunteer to serve as the retiree who does not represent any particular organization. After many inquiries, we finally found one, and that being Ms. Nancy Mounts, who is willing to represent the general population of retirees. So we'd like to maybe place her on the, on the insurance committee with full representation.
Mona, when I first got on the committee, was not the committee designated by, like, so many T, active teachers, retired teachers, bus drivers, custodian, maintenance, blah, 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 blah? So do we have a spot where she would be put in, or is this the, asking for an additional spot?
I'll check.
Okay.
It's a vacant, okay.
And so the person who has held that spot, if they hasn't, haven't resigned?
We couldn't find anyone.
I'll check the bylaws.
I'd still like to see that, yes. And if she's retired, would she not go in the retired spot?
We have, we have representation, Latin Parish, our teachers association.
Correct.
We don't have an at-large member who's not any part of any organization, that's the difference there.
Okay, so what, should we just wait and check with, with the bylaws, and see what we have?
It's, yeah, it's simple, I can look at it, and if it's not in there for some reason, we can add it. I mean, it's, whatever the committee wants to do.
Okay, what is the committee, what's the wishes of the committee?
I'd like to make a motion that we do accept her to the position, if the bylaws accommodates that.
Okay, we have a motion, and Clyde seconds it, okay. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, nays? Okay. Welcome aboard, if the bylaws allow.
I can go look right now.
I, I think some people have things to do and whatnot, so it's.
I'll email you tomorrow.
We can adjourn, I believe, okay. Does anybody have any lasting responses or comments or whatever? If not, yes, ma'am, hang on.
Once I am retired, my husband is already 65, when does our insurance become his secondary? When I retire, or when I turn 65? When you retire. Okay, thank you.
Okay, with further ado, this meeting is adjourned.